Two three rural and small town development in the amount of three hundred ninety-five thousand five hundred dollars. Very good. So, do we have background on this?
Yep, so this is for, Mr. Chairman, this is for our one stop for growth Prospect Street project that was applied for by the town some time ago. This was awarded recently, this is an acceptance of the grant. This grant will help with redoing the water lines on Prospect Street and working in conjunction with Jeremy for the repaving of the street as well.
Do you have any questions?
No. No, sir. All right. I'll make a motion to accept a state grant from the Department of Housing and Community Development for FY twenty twenty-three rural and small town development.
Second?
All in favor?
Richai Hacker, aye.
Derek Bellis, aye.
David Dufrain, aye. The motion passes unanimously. Next thing, vote to accept the renewal proposal for fiscal year twenty twenty-four and fiscal year twenty twenty-five from the town's insurance carrier, MIA, and authorize the town administrator to sign on behalf of the town.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is for just a, really a general housekeeping. This is a two-year guarantee proposal with the town's insurance carrier, MIA, which the town has been with for several years. This would allow us to lock in for a zero percent rate increase for fiscal year twenty-four and a slight increase of two point five percent for fiscal year twenty-five. MIA has, typically they send these out around this time for various towns to offer this to them. I think it's a great opportunity to see no increase for fiscal year twenty-four and a slight increase for fiscal year twenty-five. So, for budgetary purposes, we will know where we stand and how to plan accordingly. I would respectfully ask the board to pass this and allow for this to take place.
Any questions?
No. No, sir?
Good.
All right. I'll make a motion to accept the renewal proposal for FY twenty-four and twenty-five from the town's insurance carrier, MIA, and to authorize the town administrator to sign on behalf of the town.
Second?
All in favor?
Richai Hacker, aye.
Derek Bellis, aye.
David Dufrain, aye. The motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
You're welcome, sir. Okay. So, discussion with senior center director on the rental and schedule of fees of the senior center. Come on up. Please identify who you are and what your position is, please.
Sharon Nelly is the director of the senior center in Warren.
So, what do you want to do?
My board hasn't completed that vote yet, so we are going to open it up. The town administrator was kind enough to come to our last meeting and offer some advice and information on that.
So, this discussion is stemmed, as the director had indicated, you know, I did go to their recent board of directors meeting. And historically, the senior center has rented the facility out on the weekends to various private organizations, some municipal organizations, and it is a town asset. And it needs to be maintained, that asset. And there has been a level of concern as to the responsibility of, you know, locking up after an event, making sure the building is secure, making sure that, you know, what is, what is being conducted in the building is appropriate, making sure the building's not damaged, maybe, you know, cleaning up after an event, maybe assisting with any of the kitchen equipment that could be used during the event. They have a, an old rental form that hasn't been updated since two thousand and fourteen. And I know Sharon has been getting some requests now because COVID has kind of lifted somewhat and people are looking to return to doing community events, which is great. But I had recommended to her that, you know, maybe she should have a discussion with the, with the selectmen as to, you know, who, you know, the responsibility aspect of, you know, maintaining the building and securing the building when these private events, you know, happen. Now, it's, you know, there's some events that happen on the weekends, some events that happen during the week. Some of them, again, are, are private organizations, some of them are, you know, quasi municipal, you know, organizations that, that may use it, such as the libraries or cultural council or the water districts, you know, they, they, they may use it. And then there's some private entities that may use it, such as, you know, John Smith's birthday party or, or a, you know, the Boy Scouts, you know, may use it. So, you know, there, there's a, there's a form that, that probably needs to be updated. There's a schedule of fees that probably need to be reviewed. And the question of the responsibility aspect of it, because it is a town, town building and there's, it is a significant asset to the town. So, you know, I think it's a, and it's an important discussion to have to see, you know, how are we going to work this out? It may be that we have to do this during budget season to see if, you know, if we're going to have to budget for, you know, either a maintenance person to go down there and make sure that the building's secure or to, you know, or is it going to be a responsibility of, of the director? You know, there's, there's got to be a clear direction as to who's going to be responsible.
Do you have any questions?
Well, I, I think this, this needs to be beefed up a lot. I think it needs probably like a code of conduct or rules, what you can do.
We have a code of conduct posted, so I don't know if that would be covered.
Well, I'm thinking, you know, can they use the kitchen? Can they not use the kitchen? Can they go in certain rooms? Can they not go in certain rooms, right?
Typically lock those rooms that they're not supposed to be in, yes.
All right. Can they have candles?
No. No, we can't even have candles.
Okay.
No. No open flame.
Right, so I think
In a public building.
That all needs to be listed out somewhere. You've got no alcohol, but, you know, you, you want to say that like four or five times.
The only difference to that is if there's a pouring license that you allow. Because we have had patent ships from cultural council or fundraise.
Okay, that's fine, yeah.
But typically, so yeah, we, we are going to be working with the town administrator to come up with a better system. We are.
Okay.
Moving forward.
And maybe getting a damage deposit? I mean, I wouldn't, if it's a water district meeting, I wouldn't worry about it, or a library meeting. But if you have a private party in there, a birthday party or an anniversary?
They typically pay us ahead, but yeah.
Okay, but I mean, is that
But yeah, that doesn't cover that, no.
Right, what, what does it really cover? If a window gets broken, tables, you know, who knows? I mean
No, we don't.
Right.
Depends on what's going on, yeah. But typically they're calm parties, but, but you're right, a hundred percent, so
Typically.
That is something, yeah, we will visit that at our next meeting.
So, the second page has what was provided to me for the schedule of fees for the, for the rental fees. They may need to be looked at and adjusted, I don't think they've been looked at for some time.
Yeah, I think, yeah.
Yeah, we are revamping everything. We do have the water department in, they, they are coming in next week, I think. I can't remember, I think it's Wednesday, Tuesday, Wednesday. Anyway, so, yeah, we're, we're working on, because we've discussed, maybe a town entity would be able to come in during the day and sign the form, get a key, and then open and close.
Yeah, for like a library meeting or a
Cultural council, that type of thing, yeah.
That's fine.
You know, I, I, I would view that, you know, a member of town government differently than, you know, John Smith's birthday party on a Saturday. It's just different. And then, you know, when you have somebody that's not affiliated with the town but may live in the town, you know, there, there should be a level of somebody there with authority for the building.
Yeah, I, I agree. So, I think you have to be there.
Or maybe the custodian or someone, but yeah, someone.
Yeah, but the custodian, I mean, the custodian is just a custodian, I mean, he's
It's the weekend.
I know. I know, but if you want to have these, it's your building, in a way. I mean, you're responsible for that building. So, I gotta say, I'd rather have you there than, you know, somebody who's just cleaning up afterward. I mean, maybe it affects your decision to rent these out, but because how is, if, if things get out of hand at a birthday party?
Well, our custodian was security at the mall, so he's actually
Yeah, I know, but
He's pretty good.
But he doesn't necessarily have the authority. You have the authority to say, calm down, or I'm kicking you out. He, he wouldn't be able to do that. The, the other thing with private citizens renting, do we have liability coverage from MIA?
Yeah, you're covered because it's a public building, you know, I mean, you know, when you start, you know
Even for private use?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, all right, well, that's good.
You're covered.
I would still, I think maybe a damage deposit would be a good idea.
You know
Especially because you're, you know, you charge a low amount, which is fine.
But there, there should be somebody, again, with authority there.
Yes, I, I think so.
I mean, that, that's, that's the critical piece. I mean, you're covered to have these things on the weekends and different things, but who, who's responsible, right?
And who has the authority to make decisions?
Right, and if something catastrophically happened in the kitchen, or if somebody had a medical incident, you know, you know, there's a whole host of things that could, could potentially happen there. And we want to protect the town's, you know, the town's interests. So, I think, you know, we have to determine who's going, who that person's going to be.
Okay, yeah.
Do you have any questions, sir?
I agree with everything that Rich said, but I also want to ask you, is this something that benefits or bothers you, or is this weird, is something that it's okay? What is your position, where are you?
Well, it is not my decision, it's my board's decision. So, that will be up to my board when they need. I, two of my board members are here tonight, so
Maybe I'm going to rephrase it, is this something that you have a benefit of it, that you really want to pursue it?
We've always rented out, and again, just because we've always done it, doesn't mean we're going to continue to do it. So, my board will discuss that at our meeting as well. And I will definitely be voicing my opinion. I, you know, whatever's best for the center, obviously, but
And if the board wants, the full board wants to come in and talk to us, we can have a back and forth. I mean, that would be fine too, right? To come up with ideas and
I also think that the person in charge, being there should be, you know, have some money out of it.
I get paid already, so it wouldn't
I understand that, but host, when I go, when I take my kids and we go and rent a place for their party, we pay the host extra. So, there should be a, somebody in charge, like we were saying. And that person gets, you know, even a tip or something.
I legally, I don't think I'm going to
No, you can't, you can't.
But I appreciate that, thank you.
No, but I, I agree, there should be somebody with authority that's there, just in case if something does happen. You know, whoever that may be.
We, we can work on it.
Yeah. But it shouldn't be left unattended to just, you know, the partygoers.
Oh, yeah, I know.
Hey, hey, here you go, here's a key, lock it up, or we'll come back later and lock it up.
Yeah, I've never been comfortable with, with how that was done.
There should be, there should be somebody there.
Yeah.
Absolutely. But, and, but as far as town entities, town affiliated, you're okay at this point. I mean, I don't want to ask for a vote or anything, because my board hasn't voted yet, but with them getting a key and opening and closing, because the center gets a lot of use, a lot of use. Sometimes we have three things going on at once. You know, we have them in different rooms and it, it, it gets a lot.
Well, a lot of those things are being done during the day, so you're there.
Mostly evening, those are evening, it's all meetings, evening meetings.
I guess that would be something we'd have to discuss further, who's, because water departments, they're not, they're not town employees. They're an enterprise, right?
Well, they're their own corporation.
Their own, they're their own, it's a private entity.
I'm, I'm aware of that, we, we discussed about.
But presumably, they're not going to be rowdy or, you know, like a birthday party could get.
Right.
And they're not there long, it, it's half hour, hour.
Right, right, yeah.
They're very respectful, they sit down, they do their meeting and leave, most of them are.
Yeah.
Had a few in the past, but, you know, we dealt with them.
So, we're good?
Yeah, I, I think we can, we, we can work with the board, you know, at the board's next meeting, I'll come down to the next meeting. Maybe we can hammer out some, some additional, you know, clean up the, the rental agreement some more. We'll look on, look at the authority, maybe come up with an action plan that we can, you know, talk to the board, you know, selectmen again and then, you know, and hopefully your board can accept the action plan too. And then we can, you know, come up with a, a, you know, game plan as to, you know, moving forward. I, I would ask the board that maybe they, they try to limit or pause until we get this, you know, rectified. You know, the, the rentals, you know, limit the rentals.
I currently have one
Just one, yeah, yeah.
Just one private rental, and they, they have been renting it for like thirty years. It's their Christmas party every year, so we booked it last year, that's, I, I don't want to cancel that. So, someone will be there the entire time, probably me now, but
Yes, you should be there the entire, yes.
It's a Christmas party.
Yeah.
Out of my office, I won't be able to be at the party. Can't crash so much Christmas party.
Oh, sure you can't, you're running the place.
Sneak a couple cookies.
Yeah, exactly.
They're super nice people though, very nice people. But, and we have the water board, and I think the library is doing the yoga there, so, and I don't want to cancel those either, so
No, I, I, I would just, you know, maybe, you know, just, you know, don't, you know, say that the availability is, you know, on pause moving forward until we get this
Yeah.
All right, we can do that.
All right.
Very good.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, report from the review committee on the temporary police station lease proposals committee. Chair, Police Chief Jerry Mallett.
How you doing, sir? You sound, like you got a little cold.
Yeah. A little cold.
So, we just wanted to give a quick update, the committee did meet on Monday. All members were there, the building commissioner was also there as an advisor. We viewed both buildings. At this time, the committee wasn't ready to make any recommendations. They did have a few questions for the commissioner that she's going to come back with. The members are still reviewing the packets that were given. We all received a packet from the two entities that put in the process. So, they're still reviewing those. And after we hear some more from the building inspector, we're meeting on the twenty-ninth?
Twenty-ninth, yeah.
We have another scheduled meeting on the twenty-ninth.
Okay.
So, we just wanted to let you know real quick.
Thank you. Anything else, Ed?
No, any questions?
No. No, sir.
Thank you.
You got it.
Announcement of tax classification, public hearing will be held on Monday, November twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-two at seven fifteen P M. So, that's when we'll let you know what the new tax rate's going to be, all right? So, bills and warrants, or warrants and bills.
You want me to read these?
Yeah, I
Sure, no problem. Number forty payroll, oh, I make a motion to pay the following warrants. Number forty payroll, sixty-six thousand eighty-five dollars and two cents. Number forty-one vendor, ninety-six thousand nine hundred six dollars and ninety-seven cents. Number forty-two vendor, a thousand dollars. Number forty-three payroll, fifty-two thousand seven hundred ninety dollars and sixty-four cents. Number forty-four vendor, twenty-two thousand ninety-three dollars and eighty-one cents.
Second?
All in favor?
Richai Hacker, aye.
Derek Bellis, aye.
David Dufrain, aye. The motion passes unanimously.
All right, I make a motion, pay the following bills. Copycat, two hundred and sixty dollars. Central Mass EMS Corp., one hundred and thirty-two. WB Mason, one hundred and seventy-six dollars and eighty-seven cents. Northeast IT, twenty-four hundred eighty-three dollars. Power Products, thirty-five. BG Mechanical Services, for the Shepherd Building, three sixty-five. Modern Pest, ninety-two. Crystal Rock, fifteen eighty-seven. Lazat Glass, four sixty-nine. National Grid, seven ninety-three, uh, seven hundred ninety-three dollars and seventy-nine cents. Verizon, one hundred and thirty-three dollars and twenty-nine cents. C two MA Adams, thirteen hundred fourteen, fourteen dollars and fifty-two cents. BEC, two hundred and twenty dollars and ninety-five cents. And tie and bond, forty-nine hundred sixty-five dollars.
Second?
All in favor?
Richai Hacker, aye.
Derek Bellis, aye.
David Dufrain, aye. The motion passes unanimously. Okay. Minutes. No minutes.
No minutes.
I have a slight cold, sorry. New business, we got the emergency management report. Sir, you're up.
I'll read it tonight.
Thank you.
Jim McKeon, the emergency management director. So, we have the October report. October second, we do the siren tests, that's the first Sunday of every month. Both West Warren and Warren sirens get activated for testing. So, if you ever hear it on a Sunday afternoon, sunny test. Uh, October twelfth, I went to the E and D State Emergency Management Meeting. And then, October twenty-second, assisted in the trucker trunk, Quaybach High School, very big event. A lot of people came out to it, helped with parking. Also, had a little table of some safety information passed out, and we had a little booth too, passed out candy. Four members helped out with that. October twenty-fifth, we had our monthly CERT meeting. I had stopped weed training, actually Dan was our instructor, did a wonderful job. I thought five, five members. October thirtieth, we helped the Sturbridge Cert with their Halloween road race. Couple events we helped with Sturbridge and Charlton, starting to get some help from them both ways, different events and stuff, setting up some trainings in the future. And then, the trick or treat, mainly in the West Warren area. Helped out with fire police for the parade. That was pretty much the report. I also got, I know, a couple meetings back, you guys were talking about items you wanted for levy safety to get some compliance. So, worked, we're, we're going to get the trailers, I have one grant. They've been ordered, probably about eight weeks, probably first of the year, they might be ready. And then I'll get back with Jim on the details on that. But I've got another grant that has to be put out, the application has to be made out by the end of this month, which we can possibly get some shovels, grates, tools, tarps, sandbags, subrooms, anything basically that would help in the flood control, to put in this trailer. So, I'll work on that. I didn't know if you guys had any specifics that you wanted to put in there aside, but I just had.
It's actually specified within the O E and M manual for the levy, which the Corps of Engineers gave us.
Yeah.
So, they, they, that was something that was agreed upon with the town and them how many years ago, fifty years ago?
Sixty or something, yeah.
So
So, at least we can start getting some of that stuff together, whether it takes a couple grants or different
Jim, just come see me and I'll get you, I'll go over that list with you.
Okay, we'll do that.
Yeah, it says so many thousands of sandbags and so many shovels and so many
Also on sandbags too, NEMA has possibly reached out, we might be able to get some from them free. They have a lot sitting around, so they might be able to help us out in that way. Then I have also, I remember a couple months ago, came with the control of weed kits, wanted to hang up in the building. Just want to update, if, probably put them up the same time as the flood lawyers get put up.
The A Ds?
Yeah, just, just an update, well, I did talk to the salesman from the company. There is shockingly delays on the supply chain of those, so he will be updating me as soon as they expect them. But that particular unit is one that is, you know, been a little bit of a problem to get. Some of the cheaper ones are, are available, but this particular one is, is a little bit on backorder. So, I'll update as soon as we can anticipate those coming in.
Thank you, Jim. And for the Town Alert system, the Town Alert app, it's been pretty good. I think everyone's been, been growing as more and more we use it. Just trying to think about to, to get a flyer made or to get it more out, like at that town meeting or something, to advertise it. I know we could put it out at voting or something too, if we could come up with something.
No worries, I'll, I'll, I'll get you what you need.
Okay. And then fifth, this is just kind of looking ahead into, I was thinking, starting like a levy safety committee, some kind of just basically go, keep, keep up on all this, what needs to be done, you know, if we figure out, once the gates get fixed or how to fix the gates, who's going to work them? Is there people that on the, out in the public that want to get on the committee that know information about the facility? Just kind of brainstorming, see if we could possibly come up with something called Levy Safety Committee or
Yeah, I think that's a great idea, yeah.
Cause all three of you guys could be on it, one member, chiefs, the residents, administrator.
This is going to be constant maintenance that we have to do to that.
Yeah, it's, it's something that's always going to be, you know
Cause all the trees and stuff growing out of the levy that, along that stone there, all that has to be taken out of there and cleared. And it's going to be maintenance every year, if you go out there and deal with that stuff.
If you don't, if you don't keep talking about it or have some kind of responsibility for a couple people, it'll get
It'll get forgotten.
Yes.
Yeah, absolutely, that's great.
That's a good idea.
Start something.
Cool. Anything else, sir?
That's about all I have for right now.
Do you have any questions, one?
Any questions?
No, good, thank you. I'm, I'm curious, how many CERT members are there?
Right now, I'd say about a dozen. But I have that, but with events, I seem to only get, you know, half that, four, five, six.
Yeah.
Regular meetings, once a month, I usually average four to five, six, I'd say four to six people. That's why I'm starting to reach out to other people on the CERTs, and they're coming to help us to, and figure this.
I met a lady the other day, she wanted to contact you to be part of the team. I gave, I gave her, I gave her your information.
Yeah, that's either probably the town email, bepressemckeon@warren.gov. Or even if they reached out to selectmen, town administrator, fire police
On the website too, right?
Forward at my web.
It's on the website too?
Yeah. Yeah.
On the website? All right, thank you very much, sir. All right. So, Chief Mallett, your monthly report, sir?
Right. So, for the month of October, police department logged nineteen hundred and fifty-five calls, thirty-six ending in arrests. There's six felonies investigated, ninety-four incident reports generated. Five law view arrests, three There's six felonies investigated, ninety-four incident reports generated, um, five long view arrests, three warrant arrests, and twenty-eight summon arrests. Uh, they had eight protective custody's, six of the, oh, we had two hundred and forty-five motor vehicle stops, uh, a hundred and eight citations issued. And also this month, we were able to take possession of the vehicle that we ordered in May, which is a big help. That's the, uh, car six-eight, so you see the mileage is only fourteen hundred.
That's a lot of miles.
And they put on quite a few. And that was only half the month, I got in the middle of the month. So, during the month, on the first, the entire department went through days of training and certification. That was conducted by Lieutenant Early, uh, by Chief Boy, who also attended. Uh, he went through the training. Actually was.
Don't recommend.
Thank you to Principal Duffy, allowed us to use the school auditorium on a Saturday morning for training. On the fourth, I attended my first Homeland Security Board meeting. I was selected as one of the representatives from the Central Mass Chiefs. Also, this month, uh, I'm part of the Domestic Violence Task Force, or the Ware Chief, Harwood Chief and I are on it. Uh, we met with the, uh, the members of the Domestic Violence Task Force, and we signed the, uh, M R N agreement for another year's services from the civilian advocates. And again, we took possession of the twenty-twenty-two new cruiser, uh, that replaced the twenty-fifteen that had a hundred and eighty-nine thousand miles on it. Uh, that vehicle's gonna go up for auction, and the funds will go into the general fund. I think it goes up for auction this week, coming up. Uh, on the twenty-second, the department participated in the trunk or treat, if anyone was there. I'd like to really thank Detective Neil and Officer Merkel, usually I, that's one of my favorite events, but I was on vacation that week and I missed it. Um, they took, they took the reins on it, and they made the Hummer into a, a gumball machine, which, again, I do believe we outdid five parts, of course.
That's what I'm saying.
I'll point out that all the gumballs were balloons that eventually ended up in my office, then I walked in on it. Yeah, that was fun.
How that's a Halloween, and we were able to do the ho- annual Halloween parade. Uh, I will give credit to my, my fellow chief over there, he does a great job with the parade, and, uh, afterwards at the Station B doing the costume contest, so kudos to him and his guys, they can put on a good event. So, that's about it for the off month of October.
You guys did a great job, uh, we.
It's great weather.
Yeah.
It's great here, a lot of people.
Yeah, no rain?
Yeah.
Nope.
That worked out well.
It did.
It was actually beautiful.
Thank you, thank you to cert as well.
Now, did you get it on video?
The Hal- the parade?
Yeah, I'm getting tased.
Yes.
It's, uh, that's something I'd recommend. So, it was on my bucket list, I said I'd do it once and help them out, and they did, so.
You ever do it again?
I, it was, it was less than pleasant. But it was an experience, I'm glad I did it.
He's a real trooper, hit no problem.
The only one to do it.
Did he say, "Don't tase me, bro"?
No, he didn't.
A few of us sat in on the, you know, on, on, uh, the on-duty staff went and, uh, it's actually a class I'm gonna open up to all EMS, because I think it's something that is a training opportunity, it's kinda missed, because it's nice to see the other side of the fence, uh, and how that particular, uh, weapon is, is effective and why it's used, and everything that goes into it. You know, obviously, you know, non-lethals are the way that people wanna go, and then, you know, and police officers wanna, wanna take care of if they have to. Nobody wants to see someone hurt or killed, so, uh, you know, so it was kind of a informative training in terms of even medical stuff, and how that, how they figured out how it works and what exactly it does, and so it was a good class, I think next year when they do it, I'm gonna open it up to everybody to, for the lecture portion of it.
Okay, I'm listening.
Yeah.
Very good, thank you very much, sir.
Thank you. Sir, I have a comment. So, for the, uh, Halloween, I saw a couple comments where, you know, people had candies and nobody show up, and they were kinda like sad. So, in, in that effort, I'm, I'm thinking about next year, doing something like an online map, where people will sign up and put a dot on their house saying they will provide candies, so everybody in town can look at the map and, and see, you know, make a route or something. Just a thought, you know?
Or they can also go up to the schools, see if they can join their trunk or treat.
Yeah, but this was for the thirty-first kind of thing, you know? But, just something to do to help the kids and the families.
Very good.
Good job, dude.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Old business. Ten old business?
Nothing.
I'd say, old business, still haven't heard back from the school yet. So. Looking for those, um, three years' worth of audits that they promised us. Still haven't gotten anything back from them, so, um, yeah, be nice to get those eventually. Do you have anything on old business?
Uh, I just wanna say that I participated on the veterans', uh, event today at the school, it was very nice. I, I had to do a speech, I, I hope they got my best angle. Uh, but it was, uh, very nice to, you know, see the kids, you know, do the veterans and, you know, encourage everybody to say thank you tomorrow to every veteran.
Very good. Anything else, sir?
Nope, that's it.
Okay. Alright, um, you have nothing. Town administrator report, you're up, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I just have a, a brief report from the last meeting that we had, uh, last week. Just wanted to, uh, inform the board, we had our, our, our department head meeting, uh, this week, went very well. Uh, went over, you know, the stuff that was in the agenda, uh, last week. Preparation for special town meeting, anticipation for any questions that departments may have, um, you know, uh, be prepared to, to talk about your articles, uh, that are on the special. Just going over the budget calendar, uh, making sure that every department is aware of, you know, the timely, uh, essence of, of following the budget calendar, and to, um, you know, be informed that a, a, a level services, uh, uh, budget, within anticipation of, of, of some growth in some, um, some, you know, some costs around utilities, um, is, is more likely the way to which the Board of Selectmen is going to be, um, moving in that direction to formulate your budget for fiscal year, uh, twenty-four. And to also, uh, you know, be mindset that there are some trainings that are gonna be coming up. You know, the, uh, the thirty-B training, um, which has, uh, been confirmed by the Inspector General's Office, is gonna happen on December fifth at ten A M. I encourage, um, all the big departments to participate, um, especially, you know, if they do big purchases. And anybody that wants to learn about, uh, procurement, um, in municipality, um, that is a great, uh, training that's gonna be happening on December fifth, right here. And we also have also opened it up to other neighboring, uh, communities as well. So, if, you know, somebody from Ware or, or Palmer that's in the area that wants to come to our town hall, we're more than welcome to accommodate them. Maybe start some di- dialogue between, you know, our departments to bounce some things off of each other, I think would be hel- helpful and healthy. And get to know others' counterparts in other neighboring communities too. So, um, we have, I worked it out with the Inspector General's Office, that they're going to, you know, send out a, 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 a flyer saying that other communities are invited to Warren as well, to participate in the training. So, we're gonna have that. I encourage, uh, departments to, uh, to participate in Maya trainings. They come out, I know I get the email blast from Maya, I s- kinda scan through them, and if I see something that a department, you know, is departmental specific, that there's, that, that there's a training on, and it's a risk management, and we could get a credit for it, I'll, I'll zip a quick email to, uh, the department head, hey, look at, you know, I saw this, I'm not sure if you saw this, but you may wanna participate in this training, it will help the town as well, because it will, you know, reduce our, our insurance premium a little bit, and we'll get some credit for it. Talked about the draft of the employee evaluations, um, still waiting to get some additional feedback, some, some, some real feedback. There was some other, um, you know, some departments brought some feedback in terms of, you know, that they have their own evaluations. I, I, I said, you know, in, you know, to modernize things, it should be all the same evaluation, um, as a le- level playing field, um, for everybody, and to be fair and equitable, uh, especially for people, you know, in this building, um, so, um, you know, they, they, I think they understood that. And we were taking some additional comments, I said, please, email me, shoot me an email, whatever the case may be, once you go through it a little bit more, we provided additional copies for them to, to, to look at at the meeting. We had Vedar in here this week, gave a good, uh, good presentation, um, for, on the accounting software and the tre- and the treasurer's software, collectors, assessors, they do not do a building and planning, um, and from what I have gathered, I, I had spoken to the town accountant, she was really positive about it. She didn't expect it to be as good, or they changed it since the last time that, that she saw it, she really liked it. I have to circle back around and, and I wanna talk to some other departments to get some more feedback, um, you know, and that was just yesterday that, that happened. So, uh, I'll have a, a more in-depth analysis on that in the coming, uh, meetings. But, although, you know, it was, it was pretty positive so far from what I heard. Keyless entry system, I've gotten, um, part of the proposal back from, from the gentleman that was selected. I'm still waiting to get his performance bond and a contract from him. Once we get that, then we're good to go with that. He's, he's gonna require twenty percent, twenty-five percent down, uh, on the project, and then he initially, initially wanted fifty percent down, I said, no, we can only do twenty-five, and then we'll, you know, we'll pay it as, as you go type of deal, you know, to finish the project. Because it's a new vendor, I, I, I haven't, you know, I know that he's worked with Northeast I T, but I think he's, I don't know if he's done any specific projects for this, for this town in before. I haven't seen that. So, I wanna take it slow and easy and make sure that we're covered and the town's protected as well. So, as soon as I get his performance bond and we sign, and we get the contract, we'll move forward with, with the project. And I, you know, I inform a- our employees that, you know, this will be the new system, the keyless entry. Everybody will have an employee id- identification card that they, you know, that they'll have, um, and, you know, we'll be able to print them out here and, you know, issue them right on the spot. So, you know, I did say that, that that will be coming. And we also had the gentleman in here from Colonial Life, talking about the additional, um, benefits for our employees, our full-time employees. And that's gonna be moving forward, that was very positive, that there was a lot of interaction with the employees, you know, some people had some questions, you know? Is this offer, you know, can I take advantage of this? And it's, you know, it's guarantee issue, uh, with no, uh, up to a hundred thousand, so it's, it's, it's pretty, it's pretty good, for the initial start, you know? After, after the initial, uh, start of it, um, then, then, you know, depending on the level of insurance, you'll be required to do a, a physical or a, you know, um, and, and so forth, a screen. But, other than that, it was, it was very positive, very good. I had, uh, on Tuesday, uh, and on Wednesday morning, I met with the superintendent of schools, Eric Duda, for Pathfinder. Uh, he invited me over and I toured the facility at Pathfinder. I mentioned to him on how we would like to maybe start a collaborative on, on some woodworking for the stuff upstairs, um, you know, trying to engage with them a little bit more uh, on, you know, possible projects down the pike. He's got an unbelievable, uh, facility over there, woodshops, robotics, um, auto body, hair salon, uh, you name it, restaurant, all these different things over there, and they, they teach unbelievable, a great trade to all these students. We have forty-five Warren students that go over there, and, you know, they, they, they have unbelievable services, and people can learn a trade, and, and right now, they just started a plumbing program. And the plumbing program has been very successful, it's been a hot commodity. You try to find a plumber now, it's like, it's, it's impossible, and they're backed up, and, 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 and there's a high demand for it right now. And people are, are really taking advantage of that, and especially the youth, you know, to get them engaged and involved in, in, in this, uh, trade is, is very positive. I was really impressed with the program that they have over there, forty-five students from Warren. You know, he wants to engage his students more and more, you know, he wants to, you know, ha- you know, have access to the schools and talk about his program, and I don't see that they're having, being a problem with that. You know, trying to, uh, to in- inform the students, the public, that these are the programs that are offered over there, and it's, it's, it's really a nice school, and he, he's very open, and he's, you know, he wants to invite the selectmen down to his annual budget meeting. He's aware of, you know, our budget calendar, I said, we're gonna keep a tight budget calendar, I says, we're gonna need these figures well in advance. He's aware of that, he's willing to work with us, uh, and he's gonna invite the board down in February, uh, for a meeting.
Okay, good. It's nice to have cooperation.
Yeah. A- a- and, uh, and so, uh, also this week, I was notified, uh, by town council. We had a hearing, uh, for twenty-nine Bacon Street, okay? It's been a problem property, uh, for the town for some time. We went in for a, a receiver, the court, uh, declared that the garage in the back has gotta come down, and it's gotta be down by December thirty-first. It's leaning, it's a, it's a safety hazard, the, the court has ordered that to be taken down. They haven't appointed a receiver at this time, the court ordered the barn that is currently falling down to be de- demolished by December thirty-first, and as scheduled, a further hearing on the town's petition will be on January fourth. Now, in order to take the barn down, uh, the owner of the property has got to comply with the building commissioner, and has got to submit plans to properly take it down safely. You know, that's part of the compliance, he's gotta do it, and if, if this person does not comply with taking it down properly, or provide the right plans, uh, to take the building, to, to take the barn down safely, the demolition permit will not be issued, uh, and then therefore will be in violation of the court order. So, i- if the barn is not demolished, then, then the court will appoint a receiver in the beginning of January. So, they're giving a little leeway, but on, on the same token, there's a lot of code violations over there as well, and the court is aware of that. So, we're gonna continue the hard press on this, to take care of those situations, and to take care of the barn that is, is falling down, and is creating an eyesore for the property. And as a matter of fact, we had, one of our, uh, one of our review committee members lives on Bacon Street, and he, and he commented on the, on the property, he needs it to get cleaned up. So, one of the review committee members lives on Bacon Street, and, um, and he's, he's heck, he's thankful that that property's gonna get cleaned up. Also this week, we had, um, BG Mechanical Services, uh, Jim, uh, was able to call them in, we had a no heat situation. We, we rectified the, uh, the problem, or BG Mechanical rectified the problem, um, the heat was down to about sixty-five in the building.
Mine was sixty.
Sixty. So, uh, so when they arrived, they assessed the situation, uh, they, uh, they, they did a, a fix here, they may have to order a part, um, to see, they, they will order a part to see, uh, a permanent, uh, control, uh, flushing faucet code with indicator, uh, in the modular for the boiler, so that they will continue to be in operation. They had to order a part, they will be coming back. You know, uh, when this, when this, when these people, uh, come out here, um, you know, they have an old, uh, authorized person on, on their, their invoice, or their, 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 uh, their ticket here. Uh, we, we've corrected the authorized person, uh, this person's no longer an employee, um, and, and I, I requested that, when they leave, I wanna see exactly what they do for work, and I wanna be able to, to, to approve what they do, and, and kinda get an understanding of what they do, so that we'll make sure that we're monitoring a little bit, you know, on, on top of that. So, I'm, I'm, I'm hopeful that this will, this will correct that, that situation, and thank you, Jim, for your help on this, very, very important. And then, um, this week, obviously, we've been preparing for special town meeting, is a, is a big day on Monday. Everybody come on out, special town meeting, six o'clock, Quaybog Auditorium. Warren articles are on the town's website, if you wanna review them, they're on the town's website. And we look forward to seeing everybody there at six, at Quaybog in the auditorium. We got the grant notification this week from Maya, uh, saying that the award has went through. We can purchase the, uh, I just got it today, we can purchase the, uh, the sewer camera, uh, they're gonna give us seven thousand, we're gonna match two thousand thirty-seven dollars. We'll be able to order that sewer camera. We'll be able to order that sewer camera. We just got the award letter today for that. So we'll be working towards getting that done. And I think that will be, that concludes my report for this evening.
Thank you very much, sir. You have any questions, Paul?
I do not.
Any questions, sir?
No, sir.
Okay. All right. So correspondence. We have a letter from Bill So-Clear or an email. And it's about roosters at forty-nine Carl Street. Not even interested in entertaining this because it's a board of health issue. And I don't know why he's bringing it to us. It's the board of health. You live in the country. People own animals. They own roosters. You know, it is what it is.
Mr. Chairman, I did respond back to him so that, you know, he has that. I responded that we received it, that I have checked with the Board of Health. They are going to be scheduling a public hearing on this at some point. There was originally a public hearing scheduled. However, there was a scheduling conflict with whether or not there was a question of whether there was going to be a quorum that evening and one of the owners of the roosters had a parent-teacher conference. So my recommendation to the Board of Health is that you can't move forward. You know, you have, you know, significant issues here. You may want to reschedule the hearing. It's not that the town is not, you know, going to have the hearing. They're going to have the hearing, but, you know, there's going to be a time when everybody's going to be able to attend the hearing.
Okay. Board health issue.
Board of health, yeah.
Not us. Then we have Garaventa Lift. What do we have on that? There's nothing in here.
Yes, sir. Go to page.
Thirteen?
Go to thirteen.
Oh. Sorry.
That's okay.
Okay.
I don't know if Mr. Dusty was the one that's been doing this, if he wants to speak on this.
He's been doing lifts for years, right?
Yeah, I think Mr. Ferrera, you're pretty well in tune with what's happened, so I'd refer to you.
So one of the issues that came up is when the lift needed to be serviced recently. And during the servicing, it was brought to our attention that the service contract may be expiring soon or...
Well, they're not sure.
They're not sure.
That's what we are.
Yeah. And so we're going to be looking into it and getting, you know, the situation squared away to continually have it serviced and inspected accordingly.
Okay.
It's every two years. It's an every-two-year contract, so we're not sure where we are in the every-two-years.
Is it worth going out to bed on this and just?
No, I mean... Yeah.
Yeah. Garaventa has a very special skill at handling wheelchair lifts throughout all of New England. There are very few companies that do that level of lift services, like elevators and other things like that. They've been around for a long time. They installed these lifts. So I think to go out and ask for, maybe, you know, that's not up to me. But it doesn't make sense, to me anyway, to go that route. I will say that the service quality has changed a little bit. And they were very upfront about saying they had some people retire and they're having a hard time, like everyone else, to get skilled people. So including in their administrative offices. So in one day's worth of communications, they said, we don't have a contract. Someone else said, we do have a contract. And so we're at the point now where, I spoke with them again today and I asked them to do some research and tell us, show us to Mr. Ferrera what they have on record for a contract because it's up in the air. But that's different from them overseeing the state inspection certificate. That takes place every two years. The next one due is in July of two thousand and twenty-three. They handle it on behalf of the town for the state. And the state inspector comes with them. They inspect it and then they issue a certificate. Now, that's a totally separate issue other than the preventive maintenance contract that we're not sure if we still have that with them. But the inspection aspect of it is still in force and we're not concerned about that at all. But we do need some clarification on where we are with the preventive maintenance program that they've been doing very well over the years.
And it's only eight hundred dollars.
So we're going to have to wait to see, you know, if it's if it's better just to either go on a maintenance, preventative maintenance contract or just to pay as we go type of thing if we have an issue. We're fully inspected until July. We'll be investigating that.
Okay. Thank you. Did you have any questions, Paul?
No. No, sir.
All right. Correspondence from Park and Clerk.
No, you don't have it. She just called me. She would like to change her time from Wednesday morning to Thursday afternoon, three to four. She says that it helps people that are on the night shift that usually get the tickets in the winter. So she says it would help them if she moved her time to Thursday afternoon. And she just wanted permission from the board to do that.
Yeah, sure. She's Park and Clerk. Whatever she can best service the people for.
Yep.
I will change it on the website then.
No, good.
Was there anything else in that?
Nope. Nope, that's how you...
Didn't we have to announce a parking ban?
Yeah, the parking ban is when?
November fifteenth, right?
April first.
To April first from...
Midnight to six A.M.
Midnight to six A.M.
And during...
November fifteenth.
Weather events.
To April first, from midnight to six A.M. Don't park on the streets.
And during weather events.
And during weather events. All right. Easy enough. Okay. And then comments and concerns? Do we have any comments and concerns?
I do not.
Sure.
I do have one.
Sure.
And I'm pretty sure Jeremy Highway is aware of this. I just would like to see the middle of the lines of the road near the town, center of town, repainted. I've seen many people just cross the line. It's very faint, you know, between, you know, it's... There's generally a line between life and death if you head to head with somebody. But I'm sure, you know, Jeremy has something in mind or something. But I'm just concerned because they're disappearing. And for example, on front of the police station going to the high school, that intersection is very busy sometimes and cars just go crazy over there. Some paint in the middle line, I think, will help.
You follow up on that?
Yeah.
I think he won't do anything till spring, though.
I'll check with him.
Yeah, because the plows probably in the salt and stuff.
Last year, there was a problem getting paint.
Yes, there was, yeah.
So I think the paint that got used was probably not up to our quality.
Oops, paint.
Yeah, when it rains, it gets worse because you don't see the, no line, so you don't know where it is. But sometimes trucks drive very fast and it's dangerous.
So I have a question around that. When they redid the center of downtown, right, they put the bike lane in and that sort of thing. So are we supposed to maintain that painting once it's done? Okay? Unfunded mandate.
Yeah. There's a lot of those. Anything else?
No.
Okay. So my comments would be, you know, I just want to thank everybody for, you know, anybody that's served in the military or serving in the military. Tomorrow is Veterans Day. And I just want to say thank you very much to everybody for doing that. And if you've lost loved ones, my heart goes out to you. And thank you very much for the sacrifices. And to the wives, the wives of those military members and the husbands. Gets very hard, you know, during these times. And especially around the holidays. You know, a lot of people that are still on active duty and they're deployed. You know, just... Our hearts are out. They're out there with you and we're there for you. And, you know, thank you very much for the sacrifices you've made. Thank you. On that. Also, today's Marine Corps birthday again. So simplify to all my Marines that are out there. You know, it's the... I think it's what, two-hundred-and-forty-seven years? I don't know. Yep. And that's all I have as far as comments and concerns. Do we have anything from the public? Yes, sir.
I've noticed the last couple of months, I actually think the last couple of months, the light at the senior center in front. It's basically all night. It's constantly blinking. It's one of those new spotlights. I don't know if that could be looked into. It's like a strobe light almost.
Yeah, I did notice that.
I don't know if it can even shut it off.
I noticed that on the, was it the Village Market, too?
The Village Market just started recently, too. This means that they've been doing it for about two months. I feel like they're going to get added on purpose to call it a feature to you.
Yeah, I know. That'd be annoying.
So it could be the eye. You know, when it turns on at night, if the eye isn't in the right spot, when the light turns on, it kicks the eye to shut the light off. Then it's dark, so the light comes back on.
It's feeding itself.
It's feedback, yeah, it's a feedback lamp. And so the sensor... Yeah, it just needs to be moved.
We'll look into it. Thank you. And then, nobody else? Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, real quick, I think I mentioned it once before, a few meetings ago. I did have a couple more residents approach me regarding address signs. I didn't know if the board would entertain, again, possibly looking at maybe that as a small portion of ARPA money or something like that, where we could possibly buy a bunch of them and with the intent of handing them out to people that need them for, you know, it'd be... I estimated, you know, even five hundred to a thousand dollars would buy plenty of those types of signs if it was an approved project that the board would be willing to do. I'd be happy to, you know, to get some prices on them and to see, you know... But I have had at least ten people in the last couple of months ask if we were... I mean, at one point, the Ambulance Association was holding, you know, handing them out, but we don't have any more right now. So, you know, I just thought, you know, if the board was willing to look at that, it might be something to invest back in the town and get a cache of them and hand them out to people that may need them. We can do it on inspections. You know, it'd be a good way to kind of get them to people, make sure that their house is recognizable during an emergency.
Can we look into that? Can we? Yeah. We can use that for ARPA? I have no problem with it. Do you?
No. I think it's a great idea.
Find out how much money you need and we'll find out if we could use ARPA for it. We'll work with you.
Yeah, just short money. It's just, but I think it'd be good. A lot of houses out there don't have the marketing still.
Okay. Anybody else in the public have anything? Anybody online?
Everybody else, sir.
Totally, thank you. All right. So next meeting is Monday, November fourteenth. It's a special town meeting at six P.M. at Quay Bog Regional School in the auditorium. Thursday meeting is on November seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-two, at six P.M. To approval of your license, right? That's all we have on there so far?
That's all we have.
Really quick. Hopefully. So hopefully, we'll see everybody at the town meeting on Monday, the fourteenth. And other than that, you're up.
Motion to adjourn.
Second? All in favor?
Richard Harker, aye.
Danny Davies, aye.
David Dufrain, aye. We are adjourned. Did you have something?
He's coming to help me.
Oh.